Okay, good evening, everyone. We will call the meeting to order. The opening session, the regular session of the Cascade School District Board of Directors will now convene in Cascade High School Library and via Zoom. The law's governing boards of education require that their work be done where the public can observe their actions. Please remember that this is the board's meeting for the public to observe. Others may participate only with the approval of the board. Please rise to the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
And to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And there's a guest list. If anyone here not signed the guest list. Has everybody signed? Thank you. Okay, number two, approval of the minutes, approval of the minutes, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
I have moved to approve the minutes from March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number three, prioritize the agenda, Mr. Grill.
I think we should go right down the agenda. Should be a relatively quick meeting this year.
All right, you got it. On the number four is the reports, first report, superintendent's report, Mr. Grill.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to April. I think it's April. It doesn't feel like April outside, but we were checking roads this morning at five o'clock and four thirty, and we were able to come to school on time, unlike some of our friends north of us. So there's some people actually took their whole day off today, metro area for school, and then the wet snow down power lines, and away you go. So we were fortunate to do that. I think tomorrow morning will be okay, but Wednesday and Thursday morning still have potential. So we'll keep an eye on that, and we'll be out checking roads and going from there. So I have my report in front of you. The one thing I really want to remind you of is the enrollment. We continue, I say we, I continue to hear from my colleagues across the state, particularly in the valley, about the number of kids that they've lost in their school districts. And we are, as per my report, continuing to hold around two thousand five hundred and seventy kids. That is just surprising, considering that out of the twenty-one school districts in our E S D region, I think there's only four of us that have actually gone up in numbers. Everybody else has lost kids. Lots of people went to homeschool, lots of people went to online school. They haven't had a chance to come back. I really do believe that our attempt to have kids in school here on campus as quickly as we could during the COVID trial over the last eighteen, nineteen months, right? As soon as we could get them in last spring, we did part-time. We tried to make sure our kids would hear as many, as much as possible. I think that's really made a difference for us. Lots of other school districts particularly have lost elementary kids, and our elementary numbers are holding. As a matter of fact, they're a little higher than normal. So I'm pretty happy about that. The other thing is that legislature, right at the very end, gave additional money again for another summer program. It's not as big and as robust as last year's, but nonetheless, we will be receiving a good sum of money. I'm thinking right around five hundred thousand dollars for the summer, and then it'll get split up between nine through twelve is one part, and then K eight is the other part. And then we have to match twenty-five percent of which we already have in our budget for this year, ready to go. So we're good to go there. We are getting ready, getting together this week with principals to talk about that on Friday, and start to try to build the parameters around what that might look like. So those are probably the two big things right now. Obviously, without masks for the last few weeks has been fantastic. I've had teachers tell me I can see kids' faces. I've had kids say I can see teachers' faces. Life has gone pretty well that way, and just being able to handle that part of it academically and then socially emotionally, that's questions?
Some questions? And Mr. Grill, am I correct that this is teacher appreciation week?
This is.
No, was it last week?
It's in May.
It's in May?
So classified, classified was last month, and certified is next month.
Okay.
So you landed right to the right middle?
Okay. All right, thank you for that.
Yep.
The financial director's report, Mr. Pillar.
Yeah, my report in front of you as well. The biggest takeaway probably is our strength in our cash position this year. That is directly due to what Mr. Grill said in his report with the strength in our enrollment numbers. State of Oregon counts average daily membership, which means butts in the chair every day. And with those larger than expected numbers, our income or revenue has been going up pretty substantially as we go from here. So that's been very helpful for us as we both conservatively budgeted on the revenue side and on the expense side. So we're seeing some good smooth sailing into next year. Our focus in our office has been in producing the proposed budget for next year. At your next board meeting, we'll be having the initial meeting of the budget committee next month. So but everything is looking good so far. I don't have any real concerns. Again, we've been able to maintain all the federal money doing extra things for kids as opposed to trying to backfill. Some of my colleagues have been using yesterday dollars to backfill current operations, and we've been very fortunate. We don't have to do that. But all of that is primarily due to strong cash management projects, but also maintaining enrollment and strong enrollment, particularly relative to other school districts in our area. And then any questions?
When do we get the budget packet?
The budget packet will come out about a week before your before your, your initial budget committee meeting.
For the first of May.
Yeah, for the first of May. I think I'm scheduled to do that whatever that first May, Friday and May is. Guess it by calendar in my head.
Okay, you don't, you don't have the dates yet.
I don't have the date for the, what's the first Friday in there?
The budget calendar is in the packet.
Oh, the budget calendar?
Yeah.
Is that what you're looking for?
Budget calendar.
Okay, the budget calendar is in this month's order packet.
Okay, I missed it.
About. But the question as to when you receive the proposed budget should be the, I think it was the first Friday.
Okay, perfect.
Any other questions? I got one for you real quick. On the school buses, with the price of fuel going up, do we have a flat rate with the school bus company, or is there a verbiage in the contract for fuel?
We actually pay, we pay for our own fuel.
Okay.
So we buy fuel bulk. They don't actually pay.
That's not part of our contract. It's fuel. That's our.
No, no. Everything else is flat.
Right.
And it's negotiated every year, and it goes up with the C P I and all that stuff.
The fuels are.
But fuel is our problem.
Okay, that's fair. I was just curious how that worked on the contract, and you answered it.
Yep.
Good, thank you for that. All right, moving on, we've got the high school principal's report. Mr. Rasmussen.
Good evening, you guys. You have my report in front of you. I just wanted to highlight kind of how we arrived at our objectives and goals and areas of focus this year. When we came to back to school full-time, as personally we've been full-time for, you know, more than a school year, we really wanted to look at what do kids need because we were worried. We had them last year for up until twelve o'clock, one o'clock. But now we're asking for a full day. So we asked teachers in the first year or two, or the first month, to come up with what are the gaps you're seeing? What are the needs? And so we came up with a big, almost like seventy-eight things. Then we did some collaborative work. And we really synthesized down to kids need help managing their lives, and that comes to resources, to time, to, to the things that they use. They need help to with motivation, okay? A lot of times, extrinsic, extrinsic motivation is a nice gift and tool, but also looking at how can we intrinsically motivate them? How can we build that within themselves? They leave here, they don't need to get a Snickers bar every time they do something. And then finally, really about how can we continue to help kids communicate better? Because we noticed that communication was a severe lacking point. They just hadn't done it in a formal manner for a year and a half. Now, maybe they just need to get back into practice, but we really wanted to spend more time talking with kids about how can we help you write better, speak better, listen better, communicate better with your peers? And so those are areas of focus this year. Teachers are looking at their curriculum, trying to include those things. We have a planner that we've created. We're suggesting kids use it. I've asked teachers to spend a minute or two every period looking at how can you help kids organize their lives? Hey, if you have a planner, and I hope you do, will you please write that we have a test in it next Friday? Okay? If you have a planner, and I hope you do, some teachers are modeling for them in front of their dock cams, but they're using examples every day, trying to get kids to use some system of organization. Okay? And we're finding this working, okay? Grades were better than we thought. Second try. First try was rough. Second try, we thought was a little bit better. Whether it's just rhythm or actual, our specific interventions, we were happy that we're seeing more results. So anyway, those are kind of our areas of focus. I'm not calling them goals this year because we're really trying to ease people back into school without giving them definitive, you know, benchmarks and hard lines. We really want, hey, I want you to think about these things this year. Okay? And as we go forward next year, we're going to be kind of full speed ahead saying, oh, this is what we're going to do. This is a goal, but this year we wanted to kind of give everybody back in and try to really focus on these specific three areas. Okay? We've also talked with Avid. Avid took a hit during COVID, and it was primarily because Avid is such a relational class. If you recall, Avid is a program where it's twofold. One, it is centered around an avid elective class where we identify potential students who would fit that mold, and those are kids who have potential. They're doing well. They don't have a lot of support at home. Maybe they might be the first kid to ever go to college, but they're workers, okay? And we put them into these elective classes, and we find teachers who are going to go through some avid activities with them. He's with everything from organization to note-taking to how to communicate better, some of our, some of our actual school focuses, and ultimately ends up into scholarships, how to apply for college, and those things, things that you've heard Lisa Iris talk about before. But with COVID, as such a relational class, we just weren't able to do it over Zoom or that way. So our numbers are small. This year's rebuilding. We're going to get back to a full four classes. I've already got three of the four teachers identified for next year. And we were able to meet with the new state director. Her name is Elsa Flut. She came into a walkthrough of all the schools in the district and gave us some ideas and tips about how to go forward. We are not unlike most of the schools. The concept of Avid just got set aside as we were just trying to survive how to educate kids in the best way. So those are kind of our areas of focus this year. When it gets down to a non-specific content area, backing away from that, looking at what are we doing as a school to help kids? And those are just things I wanted to highlight for you this year. Any thoughts?
No question. So Avid. We only pick certain kids to go into the Avid programs. That's what I've always heard. Okay? So help me understand, we take the top kids, and they become top kids still. Okay? Where do the medium and lower kids fit into the Avid program?
Great question.
Because the top always gets the top.
First of all, I forgot to mention the second emphasis of Avid, which is the school-wide Avid, and it's where all teachers are working at improving instructional strategies, helping with organizational things. We're taking fifteen people to Seattle this, this summer to help re-invigorate that, that focus. So all kids are getting some of the same stuff. And the truth is, we're not taking the top. Okay? It's really the next tier. It's the next group of kids who, who oh, I'll give you an example. A kid who, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a scenario. A kid who is from a single-parent family, whose mom or dad has never gone to college, and the students sloughing along, getting Bs in their classes. They don't have the support. We're worried they graduate from high school. They go and don't follow their dreams or passions. They just go find a retail job and get stuck in that pattern because it's hard. Okay? There's a, there's the cycle of, I don't want to get too far down the road, but there's a cycle of poverty that exists. You don't, you don't reach for the stars. You don't go to the next level. So it's really that group of kids we're looking at. And it's an application process. I, I know for a fact in the junior high, we don't throw people away. The only ones who turn away are the ones we know aren't going to make it. Like, they don't have the will to or the stick-to-itiveness. I mean, Avid stands for advancement via individual determination. They've got to have that individual determination. If they don't, we've tried to put kids in to save them. Hey, this kid's a really nice kid, and we think they can do amazing. We know they're not a really worker yet, but maybe Avid will make them a worker. It doesn't. Okay? It doesn't. So these are workers, but we just know that they could do a little bit better with a little more attention, a little more focus. This is not our top, top students. They are largely never happen. Because they don't need it. They have the support at home, got the skills. This is that next tier. And this is filled by historically underserved groups, whether whether they're, you know, some of our minority groups in this, in this, in this community, or, or students of poverty. A lot of kids are in that, in that, in that area, for sure, that's all.
Okay, that helps.
Yeah, for sure. That was my first concern too, when I heard of Avid ten years ago. I'm like,
Right.
why aren't we just helping these kids? That doesn't make any sense. But the further I got into it, I love the school-wide concept. We are an avid school, and they added that about six, eight years ago. We are an avid school. I love that concept. Everybody can own it instead of just the kids who are in the avid elective. And we'll get back to that, for sure, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
I want to ask one more question on your, your manage, motivate, and communicate
Yeah.
that you identified, and it says each one of these says the same thing. How can we help our student manage? How can we help our student motivate? How can we help our student communicate? Could we get a follow-up on that maybe in, in six months to say, what's the answer? How did you? How are we? What are we doing? I mean, I like to identify it. I guess the next question is, now what?
Well, those are the questions we ask each teacher to answer in their own class. So I'll try to come up with some examples for you.
Right. That's what I mean, if we can see the now what, how did we, or how are we?
Yeah.
Oh, that'd be great.
You bet. I will.
Definitely. Any other questions? Nope. All right. Thank you, Ms. Rasmussen. Appreciate it. All right, moving on is D, junior high principal's report.
Mrs. Lade.
Mrs. Lade.
Mrs. Lade is working on bringing kids back from this snowy.
She's channing that one up right now.
She's working on that. They're coming back every day, going back up. That's how we built it this year with COVID stuff. When we, six months ago, we were talking about it. That's the way we had to to build it. Of course, we picked this week, not last week. So they're up there. I heard they enjoyed all the snow and had a lot of fun. Molly might be able to fill in a little bit more. Did you hear much for them?
No, it's a lot of snowy pictures.
Got, yeah, lots of snowy pictures. And so their buses are, are bringing them down right now, in the daylight picture. And once they get down out of camp, tad more, it looks like the woods are fine. So they're working through that. Mrs. Lade had on her, in her report, kind of two things, counselors, the two counselors that they've hired, really worked at friendship groups and, and some of that social emotional conversation we've had before, particularly at the junior high level. And they're working on attendance, and I think Molly will talk a little bit about some of the other A B C. I noticed something you had, so I'll leave that to you. I don't want to steal your thunder. But those are the two things she's working on, and she said if you have additional questions, please feel free to get in.
All right, sounds good. Thank you very much. Moving on is junior high assistant principal's report, Ms. Galey. Welcome.
Thank you very much. You have your, my report in front of you. I did put a little, this is technically my assistant principal report, so I just put in some stuff on the title, though, that we're, that we're moving forward on. And so I'm going to jump to what we were doing is my vice principal duties. And it's, we've had a, it's been a great year, trying to, I felt like we kind of all got thrown in, and, and we had, we've had some kids that have been great, and we've had some kids that have definitely been a challenge, and trying to figure out how to help those kids is important. Mr. Seaberson the other day at a staff meeting, it was, it was so great. He said something about, it was a Gordon Ramsay quote, and I don't have it all, but the one that stuck out to me, he said Gordon Ramsay says that the only way to really be successful is if you actually teach kids the tasks that they need, you know, teach those people the actual thing that they need. And we all kind of, it was funny in the room, we all went, oh, yeah, we need to remember to teach kids how to act appropriately. We need to teach them how to, Mr. Asherson talked a lot about communication. I just worked with a child the day that had taught, that had kind of sassed back to a teacher, and we went through this whole scenario, you know, how could you rephrase that? How could you say that differently? And it was really interesting to listen to this student kind of, you could see the light bulb coming on. And I just don't think, I just think that they're out of practice. And so teaching them again how to undo that, and, and because we've been really focusing on that, our teachers have been focused on that. I really feel like, I think we are starting to get ahead of it. We're starting to get ahead of it. We're being much more proactive. We're talking to kids. Before, a lot of things, kids are trusting us, they're coming and talking to us. We have parents trusting us, giving us heads up on, on difficulties. And so that's been really positive. And one of the things we were talking about, what is something that's positive? Well, I really wanted to emphasize those students who have been doing the right thing, right? They have the traits that are going to make them super successful. And, and as you all know, we need to be on time, and we need to be respectful to people around us. And so Tamara Nixon pulled a list for us of every kid who hadn't had a tardy for the second trimester, and then any kid who didn't have a disciplinary action against them. So that's, that's everything, you know, that's, that's any, anything that they could have got. And we ended up with, I think it was two hundred and sixty-five kiddos. And that was, that made, put a big old smile on my face. I was like, yes, there's two hundred and sixty-five that have had nothing. And I gotta go around, we Debbie Lade takes great joy in finding hats for Arnie Lauder to have to wear when they hand out prizes. And so she found a tiger hat for all of us. And so we put on tiger hats and walked around and handed out tiger paws to the kids. We just walked in the classroom, gave a little spiel, had the kids stand up real quick, threw them out, and talked about characteristics and, and traits that make for success. And so that was really fun. And then later in the day, we did A B C awards also. So that was any kid who had only, who got A B Cs, no Ds or Fs basically, for the second trimester. So we're really able to, I don't know, highlight some of those kids that are really doing the right thing and, and let people know that we really are, you know, I'm so grateful for those kids. They're helping us with our culture and our, and our leadership within the, within the school. So that's been kind of a fun, a little fun thing we've done the last couple of weeks, and we're going to continue that through the third try. And we're kind of brainstorming ways to, you know, to help teach some of those tasks to, or some of those traits, and, and help kids just make some better choices, I guess, as we go through the, into the spring. And we're going to be sending them up to the high school, so we want to, we want to send them ready to go to be freshmen. So that's all I have right now. Is there any questions?
Questions? So I'll ask on the A B Cs, how many, what percentage of the kids fell into the A B C category?
That was Debbie.
I know, it was on hers, and I, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't.
You mentioned it, so I thought I.
Yeah, I didn't know that. I didn't, I don't know the percentage of hats that we have there. So, but I would be more than happy to look that up.
That's all I've got for you.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on is junior high assistant. Nope, we just did that one. Pardon me. Yeah, elementary principal's report.
Okay, Mrs. Gane Field is on, online. She's got her report here, and she said if you have any questions, you want to take a quick look, she can respond via Zoom. She's unable to make it tonight.
I hope she's feeling well, and we will, I, I will pass on any questions till next time.
Fair enough.
Anyone else?
Off the hook, Cindy.
No, we'll wait.
All right.
Take care of yourself, Cindy. I'll take care.
Okay, moving on is G, special service director's report, and that's going to Ms. Johnson.
Hi. You have my burn review, which is a lot of information and not tied nicely in a bow, and I did that on purpose because all of it feeds into each other. So one of my priority initiatives is to provide high-quality instruction for all of our students in special education. Well, what that means is I took some data, and I wanted to see what is happening across our district, and I compared it to multiple districts around us that look like us. And I have the privilege, we'll call it a privilege, of opportunity to do our civil rights data for our district, which is about eighty hours of my life. And it, and I'm not exaggerating. And at first, I grumbled, okay, I grumbled a lot through it, but then I started noticing a trend where my students in special education, they, there was some striking numbers for me. And one of those numbers is actually on this data report. And that is the amount of students graduating on time that are in special education. In two thousand eighteen, nineteen, only fifty-nine percent of our students in special education graduated on time. It improved in two thousand twenty, twenty-one. It went up to seventy-six percent, and that's the graph that you have in front of you. While it's improving, to me, I look across our, all of the data, and that is the area that we need to put more emphasis on because that's our lowest area of student achievement. When I walk, looking at all of our programs, which is why I listed all of them for you in our report, school by school, I'm thinking about how are we serving our kids, and is it the best model and the best way? And what you see at the elementary at Umsville, you see a lot of programs in one school. One of those programs is called Basic Skills. That Basic Skills Room serves some of our students that have a higher level of need, and they might be lower cognitive skills. Then those students historically have gone to Basic Skills in the junior high. And then those students historically have gone to Basic Skills at our high school. Once they hit that Basic Skills classroom at the high school, they will be graduating with a modified diploma. All of our students that qualify for a modified diploma then move on. They have the opportunity to move on to our adult transition program. I'm seeing a higher number of students who are graduating with a modified diploma than most of our surrounding districts. I am going to be taking a look at all of our programs, and I'm possibly going to take away the basic skills of the elementary because research shows the more time our kids are spending in general education classrooms, the higher success rate we see later down the road. I was that student. I was in special education. I'm dyslexic. I never spent any time in a specialized classroom in my elementary years. I struggled in junior high, and I struggled in high school, but now look at me. And that's the story I tell our kids when I walk into classrooms, especially our high school classrooms. Because I've had several conversations with several of our high school students this school year in my office, where they've come and sought me out, and they're ready to quit. They want to drop out. And I say, not on my watch. And I tell them my story. We can get our kids to graduate, whether they're on an I E P or not, and they can be successful. So my goal is, is to change these numbers and to keep them going. There you go. What questions do you have for me?
My son was also one of those. And he has to suffer. Struggled all the way through, and it wasn't until high school that they decided to, I pushed the test, and they said, well, we didn't want to label him earlier. I go, he was labeled from the beginning anyway. It would have been better to have known. So I love the fact that now we're finding it earlier in kids to give them the help that they need. But I agree. I think Basic Skills in elementary not a good idea. Thank you for the work.
You're welcome.
Can I ask you, what, what does the adult transition program, what is that?
What does it look like?
Please.
So first, all students in special education are eligible from preschool to twenty-one. If they graduate with a modified diploma, then they continue those services till they're twenty-one. If they graduate with a regular diploma, then their services end at that eighteen or when they graduate. So an adult transition program specifically targets our students who graduated with modified, extended, or a certificate of attendance. And we're looking at making successful independent as possible students for adults. So actually, we are partnering with several different job sites right now, getting our kids work skills, volunteer skills. We're getting them out into the community. My adult transition teacher, I have to say, we hit the cream of the crop. She is a self-starter and a self-motivator. She's teaching these kids how to write their resumes. She's done jobs, job interviews with them. Some of the things that they haven't got quite yet over here at the high school for our students. And then they're starting next week. On Tuesday, they get to work, they get to go to the Marion Polk County Food Share, and they start volunteering. Then we have partnered with a garden. All of a sudden drawing blank on the name, but it's a nursery where they're bringing in all the supplies. We're doing all their planting for them, and then they get to go out to the nursery as well. And then I have another student, his dream is to volunteer for his church, to work at his church. He starts there next week, and we provide an adult to go in and help him do that.
So are those kids that are in the eighteen, twenty-one program, are they part of these numbers when it says there's three hundred and eighty-seven students eligible to proceed? Are they part of that? When we, when we're doing head count, they're part of that group?
Yes.
Okay. And they go on till they're twenty-one, they stay part of our
Yes.
of our head count?
They, it's not a required program. So a lot of those kids, we have at least eight more students who are eligible this school year for the adult transition program, and they chose for various reasons not to come. Some of those kids already had full-time jobs, and they, they didn't want to. Some of those kids were like, I'm an adult. I don't have to go to school anymore.
Okay.
Yeah.
But i- if they so choose to be part of us, they're captured, and, and we're getting, we're counting them.
Yes, they're part of our A D M. We get money. Yeah. Absolutely. Anything else?
Any questions? All right, thanks.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we've got communication director's report. That's going to be Ms. Savile.
So you have my report.
So you have my report in front of you, and I wanted to elaborate tonight more on Parent Square, which has been a big responsibility for me this school year. Parent Square is our district-wide communications platform, and it's funny because I've been managing that since we adopted it at the beginning of the school year. The phone call I took right before this meeting started was Mrs. Gates, who was trying to get a notification out to all the sixth-grade parents that the bus is on its, on its way home, and they needed to meet their kids at the school, and she was having some technical issues, so it takes up quite a bit of my time. But we adopted Parent Square before, at the beginning of the school year, because prior to this year, we were using so many different communication tools across the district. District level, we were using School Messenger, some schools were using Classroom Dojos, some were using Remind, some just regularly Gmail lists, so we adopted a platform that can be used at the classroom level, the school level, and the district level. And one of the things I really like about Parent Square is it's a very mobile-friendly program. So we have a lot of families who are receiving their communications via an app, app notifications, or text message notifications, and we're always on our phones, so we might as well try and school feed them the information that way. And the program's also given us some really good data on how people are receiving their communication, how they wanna be communicated with, and if, if they're opening their communication, the language they're using and things like that. So it's nice when a parent says, I never received that email, and you can actually look at the data and say, you did, and you opened it, and, and here's that result. So that's really, really been nice to have. Across the district, we have about a sixty-three percent open rate for email, and, or just for all notification, which if you look at.
I gotta ask, so you can tell if I don't open that?
Mm-hmm, and you don't. Your wife does.
Oh, good.
Yeah, which is, which is briefly to my next point, with most students having two parents connected to their account, with a sixty-three percent open rate, at least one parent is opening that communication, and it's not gonna succeed, so. Having that information is great, and having, you know, families receiving communication and being informed. The other cool thing about the program is it's very interactive, so as families are receiving communication, they can appreciate, they can reply. There's options for signing up for volunteering, or for parent-teacher conferences, or permission slips, all of that can be done through the program. And so as you interact with the content, you're seventy-five percent more likely to remember, even if it's something that doesn't necessarily pertain to you, so. We want messages to stick in people's heads and things to stop getting, like, fall through the cracks, so that's one of the reasons we have this program, and it's been probably taken up most of my time this school year, but it's been fun to manage, and as we continue to use it over the years, I think people will feel more comfortable with it, and it'll be able to be a one-stop shop for a lot of the things that we put out to our families. Questions on that, or anything else in my report?
Sounds interesting, maybe I'll check it out.
Yeah, you haven't even registered.
Wait a minute. You're sending it to the wrong address.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. All right, moving on, number five, Discussion Communications Personnel. Ms. Morgan.
Good evening. So it is hiring season, and probably from now until forever. I'm hoping like July, August at the latest, I'll be bringing you new hire recommendations, and the three that are on your list today were actually hired as temporary teachers for the, for this school year. And so we are bringing them back for the upcoming school year, not as a temporary, but bringing them on as a full-fledged member of Cascade. So we have Amber Burns in sixth grade, Ashley Nun at Turner Elementary, and Donna Ray with us coming back to do our back program with Junior High. That's all, any more questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
I do have one question. How many more do we know that we have to go?
Um, I believe I have five elementaries. I have a temporary high school math, I have a high school choir, and a high school special ed. Autism specialist, that were, yeah. Transgender, what else? Those are the big ones.
We're looking at about one. About ten.
Eight to ten more.
Yeah, yeah, it's probably looking about like what it typically does each school year.
Okay.
So we usually have about twenty to twenty-five new hires.
Okay.
I think we'll be back to normal this year.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on is our Board Member Vacancy. We have a spot that we need to fill, gang, and I believe we're all in agreeance at this point that we'll hold interviews for folks that are interested in coming on board. Anybody have any thoughts or concerns going that route?
No.
No?
That's all you do.
Okay. Mr. Drill, do we have any timeline that we need to follow or adhere to?
So you have a Budget Committee hearing in May.
Okay.
The suggestion would be that you ask Cheryl to put out for anybody that would like to send in application, and then you could close it at May, and then review those, and then interview them June.
Okay.
If you would like.
Okay.
To do it that way. The budget, the budget hearing is coming, and it's coming up here, that you, you do have to do in May, so you can get it wrapped up in June, so.
Right.
Unless you wanna be both in May, my suggestion would be to.
Right, no, I'm on board with that. Does anybody have any concerns going that route?
No, I don't think that one's.
I think that'd be fine, okay.
We can, we can put it together, and Cheryl will take care of the business.
Wonderful, okay. Any other thoughts on that, gang? All right, thank you. Moving on is the Budget Committee Calendar. And that is going to be Mr. Pillar.
Yes, your Budget Committee Calendar is very similar to the way it's been the last couple of years. So the Budget Committee meets at the start of your May Board Meeting, and then we we have been a district that has traditionally had one Budget Committee meeting. Yeah, if you feel like you need to have more, you could certainly schedule another meeting, you just have to have enough notice time, so you need to do it in a week or ten days later. And then, once the Budget Committee gets approved, or the proposed Budget gets approved, then it comes to the Board again for final adoption and appropriation after June. The hard deadline for that is June thirtieth, you must have an adoption, appropriation, resolution passed before the end of June. I might say.
Mr. Pillar, if we're doing the budget meeting on May ninth, when will the Budget Committee get that packet?
The packet comes out of the first Friday of May.
First Friday of May, and so it's, it's gonna be the week, the Friday before the meeting.
Yeah, that's my mind.
Okay, okay.
Would you prefer you have more time than that?
I would prefer we not have less time than that.
Yeah, I understand that part.
Okay, is it possible to get it sooner?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's just, you know, it's just time, so.
Right.
I can shut my door.
No, I mean, I don't wanna.
Speak to me, and I'll be happy.
No, I don't wanna, I don't wanna wish that upon you. No.
I think, I, I think, you know, I can commit to having it done the first Friday of May, but if, if that doesn't give you enough time to review that, I'm happy.
No, I, I don't, I think that'd be fine, that'd be fine, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
But, yeah, okay, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
So he'll have it to you by the sixth at the latest, but a couple of days.
Yeah, I mean, sooner, fine, if not the sixth, it's fine.
Yeah, we can talk, we can see what resources he needs, and we can.
Right.
See if we can figure that out.
Okay, yeah, super. Thank you. Anything else on the Budget Committee Calendar?
No, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to sixth A is Second Try Employee Resignation, Mr. Drill.
Actually, it's not resignation, it's recognition.
Recognition, what did I say?
Resignation.
I hope they don't resign.
Recognition, pardon.
These guys, these guys, and gals have done an amazing job, so a number of years back, we talked about trying to make sure we recognize great educators across our district, and every trimester, in our largest buildings, we've recognized two people, at our smaller buildings, we recognize one, and we kind of rotate that process, so you have names there. Every year, Cheryl does an amazing job of doing something there right by her desk, where we recognize and put their names up, where you always wanna make sure that you guys see this, and then we put it out to our school community here, and basically say, congratulations to these folks, so every school has somebody on there. Goes with a big thank you, I, I handbrained a thank you on behalf of you guys and myself, and there's a small gift card in there for everybody, so just to say thank you for the extra hard work that you did, so. Wanted to let you know, so you can see who those folks are.
All right. Any questions on that, anybody? No? All right. Thank you, Mr. Drill. Next one is the Work Session Tour.
So we mentioned a month ago that we were hoping to be able to get you guys out on the tour for the May, before the May Board Meeting starts, so you've got the budget part of, of that, you've got the regular Board Meeting, and before that, you've got the tour of the new Turner building that we put in here over the course of winter. Mr. Level would like to share that information and show you that as well, and Mrs. Iverson has also graciously said they'd like to make sure that you're there, and then you do a gathering, and maybe we'll have a little bite of food, so you can kind of see how the building went and how that process works, so. My assumption would be is that that's okay, I can start to build that timeline, and we'll get that out to you so you know in advance what that looks like.
Great, sounds good.
Sounds good.
Any concerns?
We'll take care of it.
No? All right, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the Public Comments. They're with me here. Cascade School District's Public Comment Proceeds Your Follows House Bill Twenty-five Sixty. The bill requires the governing body of a public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technology, technological means, and provide the opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony. Public comment forms and written submissions must be submitted by twelve PM on the day of the meeting. Only those who have turned in and commented or by the deadline will be given the opportunity to address the board. Please note, this is especially important to remember that we all model the way for our students, and we ask that you share your thoughts in a respectful way. The Board Chair will ask you to stop speaking if you were not able to adhere to these guidelines. Audience time is not intended as a forum for public debate. At this time, I lost my.
It's on.
Oh, okay, at this time, Christopher Clark. Is he with us? Mr. Clark with us?
Audio.
Audio, okay.
I'm here, I, I was just like listening, and I'm, the only reason I'm listening in is I thought if I decide to apply for the Open School Board position, I should probably witness a school board meeting. What a.
Fair enough.
So I don't really have any public comment, other than that I'm interested perhaps in being a board member.
Well, we appreciate your interest, so thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Clark? Is that all you had?
No, you can call me Chris, too, but yeah.
Anything else? Is that all you have for us?
Yeah, I mean, I could interview right now, but.
No, no, not necessary, but thank you. All right, well, we appreciate you joining us this evening. And I think that was our only comment? Yep, all right. Then we'll move on to Resolutions. Agenda Item Eight-A Resolution Regarding New Hire Recommendations.
It resolved Cascade Board of Education moves to approve the hire of Amber Burns, junior high teacher, Ashley Nun, elementary teacher, and Donna Ray Loomis, FACS teacher, as recommended by the administration. Second.
Agenda Item Eight-A Resolution Regarding New Hire Recommendations has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight-B Resolution Regarding Board Member Vacancy.
It resolved the Cascade Board of Education moves to accept applicants for Board Member Position Four with the term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Eight-B Resolution Regarding Board Member Vacancies Has Been Moved and Seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight-C Resolution Regarding Budget Committee Calendar.
Be resolved, the Cascade Board of Education moves to approve the proposed two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three Budget Committee Calendar.
Second.
Eight-C Resolution Regarding Budget Committee Calendar Has Been Moved and Seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Get your agenda items.
So two things. One, appreciate that Mr. Rassister just reminded me, he was looking at me, that make sure to invite all the board members to graduation, and that's June eighth, Mr. Rassister? Yep, June eighth, out on the Big Field.
Right.
So at Federico Field, please, so make sure to jot that down on your list of things, so you can be there. And then the second thing is, I didn't get a chance earlier, I probably should've said something. We had Madeline and Ms. Sattler, Mr. Pillar, and Mr. Ramey go to the Bonds and Ballots Conference this last Friday. Do any of you want to say anything in our meeting about that? So informational stuff, you want to share, I wanted to make sure, I was remiss, maybe treasure said that soon.
For me, it was just a very good investment of time, and I'm very glad that I went, and yeah, I'm looking forward to the future.
Good, more, more questions, right? And I was told that by Oregon School Boards Association that they do have trainings back online for school board members in July, but the bigger training that we have always traditionally gone to is the one in November. I am hopeful to connect with you guys if it's schedules, to have you guys go to November Board Training. And I think they're gonna go back to Portland, and they're, it's gonna, either gonna be in Portland or it will be in Seattle. When, too, we'll get you the information as it becomes available. Those are the two things I have.
Wonderful. Okay, anything else? We stall a minute, we won't break a record for going the fastest. Pretty quick, all right. Anything else, anybody? All right, we're meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate you coming.